In actual streets and then the two facilities positions are open right now. Many of you met Brenda. Brenda left to return back to Alabama. And we're not, we have not aggressively gone out to look to replace the facility positions. Between Andy and Robert have decided to kind of rotate and share those responsibilities in the time being, again until we get a director in place that can provide some oversight on all of the workers. It's been a little overwhelming for Andy and Robert at this point to keep up with everything that they're doing. It's not within their normal scope of work, but not within their, what they're used to doing on a regular basis. So that's pretty much it. The only one that we are still looking to fill is in the water department. There's still two positions in the water department that are open. The notes that I have here from Heather is that a previous employee resigned for another position and then one other employee was terminated due to disciplinary reasons. We had two new people start yesterday. We have one that starts April 1st in streets and then water. And like I said, we've got interviews next Monday to try to fill four more positions. And then the public works and public utilities directors.
Two social facts. You said that there are 125 positions or roughly 80 full-time positions, correct?
Eighty-eight.
So if you look at the eighty-eight full-time positions, what's the minimum pay that they receive?
Thirteen fifty.
So thirteen fifty is $27,000 on average. That's the average. And so I just want to put that in perspective. On top of that, $27,000 plus $9,000 worth of benefits, healthcare, retirement, puts them up into $36,000 range, very competitive for the market. So it's not clear that's the major driver for us not being able to get people because we are now at least in the market where we made that increase this last year. Do you view 18% turnover as reasonable? That's one out of, that says every year, 20% of our employees are walking up.
Well, the 18% turnover is as a whole, it doesn't include the people who have left for their own other reasons. We went through four dispatchers in, actually, yeah, we went through four dispatchers in a month. So, you know, they get hired on, they can't pass the test. We had a recycle tech that couldn't pass the drug test. So they're considered hired, but then we have to let them go, or they come in and they don't get their certifications and we have to let them go. Eighteen percent as a number is probably not where we want to be, but it doesn't mean that we're necessarily having a hard time retaining people. It's these other elements to it. Brenda leaving to go back to Alabama, Lance left to go back to El Paso, his wife is leaving at the end of May to go back to El Paso. Those are not really job-related turnovers.
I'm asking the question to try and understand. But I do believe, you know, $36,000 in take-home and food benefits is pretty competitive market.
It is. Unfortunately, a lot of the employees do not value all the benefits, the retirement, the health insurance, the holidays, and sick pay. They do not value those as much as they do what actually goes into their pocket.
Yes. So in my view, when it comes time to budget for this next year, we're going to talk about, do we give people the option for benefits, or do we give them the pay?
Well, I think healthcare, we don't have a choice.
Well, healthcare, why?
That one's out of our hands, but yeah. And it's something that we've talked about as to whether or not, well, I guess you'll have this discussion later as to what other alternatives are available when it comes to benefits. We do have a couple of employees who do not take their health benefit because what they get from their spouse is sufficient and more than sufficient than ours would be. And their thing is, you know, well, if I'm not taking healthcare, can I get a little extra? That's not a decision that I can make. That's something we'll have to talk about.
And nowadays, these younger folks, they're looking at what's in their pocket. They're not valuing all the benefits. They want to see money in their pocket. And that's what the petroleum industry comes to, gives them more money and could be part-time work with no benefits. But they see more money on hand immediately.
Well, anyway, the training cost or the cost to pay them is a part of that benefit. And again, you know, they come in, if they get a license or they get certification and they stay a year here or two years, that certification goes with them. So all those benefits, it's really hard to get them to value those benefits as much as what they're actually making out.
I know a couple of years ago, this before you arrived here, that was one such as I told, with this former city manager, he needed to explain to the new hires, when you figure your benefits, it's not $10 like it was back then, it's actually this amount of money. We can give you the total amount of money, but you still got to pay that out, out of your pocket for health insurance and all that stuff. So it's tough, especially in a little town like this where we're limited access for folks who look for.
Yeah, and then we always have to look at, you know, family relations, background checks, the drug screens. Do they meet the minimum qualifications? And, you know, like I said, we hired a recycle tech and it's all gung ho, went out there, worked three days. We said, hey, they're calling you back, you gotta go back and retest. And he never did that. So just some other numbers real quick from the demographics. The average age of our city employees is 38. Average age for employees in Alpine altogether is 38.7, and Rooster County is 43. So we're trending. Gender breakdown, we're at, we were at 64, 36 last year, and this year we're at 65, 35. So we're, we're kind of in line for this area for the county and the city.
And 65 male or female?
Sixty-five male.
One thing I think to keep in mind is that it seems like the country right now is sort of on an employment upswing. And unfortunately, in the sense for municipal governments, but there are many openings out there now where they're better paid, better benefits. So people are going to take advantage of that. And although we have a turnover of 18, it seems to me that still our challenge is, let's try to fill those positions so that we can continue providing the best possible services to residents. That's important.
Anything else?
Oh, that's all right.
Let's move on to the next one.
Next is actually G. An update on next steps you see, Jessica, relative to our building, appraisal, and valuation process and what you see going forward there.
Let's see, we are looking, let's see, we still have one, two, four. We have 10 more properties that are waiting to be appraised. The evaluation of this building, actually council chambers going up to the front door, is almost complete. There were a couple of questions that I had within what they submitted to me, and hopefully in April they'll be here to go ahead and present their results on this building. I think once we kind of confirm which buildings are ours and which parks are ours, not only will it help us with the master park plan, but it will help us put together a strategic facility plan, where then council can kind of workshop and decide what they want to do. I know we had talked about selling some of the buildings, like the old sunshine house, and maybe looking at some of these other empty parks that haven't been developed yet. But I think if we, if we're patient with it and we put together, do the proper planning, it'll make it easier for us to convey an actual message to the city as to what our goal is with them. And with a strategic facility plan will not just give us an idea of what we need to do for today, but what we need to do for the next 10 or 20 years. And that's kind of where we're at, still waiting. I think our appraiser was out in, again, December?
In December.
So that pushed him back about a month with those appraisers. So I have the list of where we're at, more or less.
When do you think, given we're getting close to the May timeframe, we start pitching discussions, when do you think we're going to come back with some thoughts on that area? Are we a couple months away?
It's just on these two little pieces.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand the game plan.
I think if anything, by budget time, we might be able to look at maybe setting aside some costs to put together the facility plan, and then maybe a master plan. I don't really see us ready to actually put some of these properties out on the market until we actually get, after we get through that process. We've had some great suggestions for the use of some of them, and of course, that's going to be something the council will need to look at. Do you want to lease the sunshine house? Do you want to allow a nonprofit to use it? Or do you just want to get it off the books? I think the one other property that we added on here, which totally split my mind, we currently lease the land under the post office. And I talked to Mick about it because he has made us a cash offer to purchase the land now. And so Mick and I will have to have a conversation about how we put this together to present to council. That was, that land was not on this list.
Who was made the cash offer?
The, the person who has leased the land for the post office. So I think we had a 30-year lease on it. And so we'll need to look at kind of that cash offer to see how that relates to those long-term payments. And we definitely will have to get the land appraised, so we'll need to get that over to Mr. Luntler to add that to his list. And then figure out how we go forward. Because I, Mick was saying something about, we have to bid it out.
I see you have to bid it out.
Yeah. I don't know how we do that when we own the post office.
I own the land. Yeah. That's no different than that airport leases. We don't, same good on the acres, but we own the land.
Yeah. So that's where we're at with that.
Thank you. So item H is, and I know we're going to get into discussion a little bit on the hotel occupancy tax, but I've got lots of questions about convention center concepts. I know we had the occupancy talk a little bit about that, but I'm not up to speed on where we are in that process. But people are asking questions.
Can we move this conversation to item number eight when we get to that resolution? Because it all kind of ties together also.
Yeah, we certainly can. My foot will strike that sentence from that resolution.
What sentence?
Particularly the sentence which is, I think it's the third whereas. So I'm happy to move it to that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because the third whereas talks about reallocating, potential allocated funds. And I'm happy to look to the action on that.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is also mine. That's the Parks and Rigs. So the Parks Board, and you have in your package, document they submitted, that they had a discussion, the Parks Board, about getting the ReTranoco Recreation Program and the Department of Kinesiology and Human Performance at Sora State University, developing Parks Relations Service learning projects. And frankly, I think it's a pretty good idea. It's all about having students to go and provide feedback to the Parks Board in a way that would be helpful. It doesn't cost the city anything. But the Parks Board said, hey, we'd certainly like to get council to say, hey, it's okay to go do that. I'm not sure what the implications are from a city standpoint. But they're looking at providing the Parks Board additional insight information using Rigs to go do that. They would do all that work and lead it back into the Parks Board and the city.
That's a great idea.
Do you have a comment on that, Jessica?
I do. Actually, I talked with Chris Hadda about this probably months ago, because he wanted to get his, some of the students to do some internships. We tried working through the actual SLRAS office on the internships and it kind of just didn't work out. And in kind of getting ready for the park plan, he said, I'd really like for my students to get an understanding of what goes into putting in this park plan because they may have to do it in the future. And so he kind of wrote this up, he sent it over to me. I said, I think it looks great. You're going to be overseeing the project. The engineering firm that's consulting on that master park plan is, really needs the help because as the city, we don't have maps, we don't have things GIS. And this is research that they can do, that can bring down the price and really get us a comprehensive master park plan that we need to have, as well as mapping for the future. And because he's offering it as a graduate kind of project, I think it's great. There really isn't any, there's, not, there really isn't any negative to the city on it.
Did you need council to pass a resolution to say, hey, we're going to want to do this?
That's a question from Mick.
That would be good.
Okay. So why don't we put on the April 2nd agenda, get this done and move forward?
That's a good idea.
Okay, item J, master fee schedule. So we had a discussion the last city council meeting, went through a lot of details. Just try and understand where are we on getting our master fees ordinance? And there was a lot of work that needs to be done, discussed itself. So I'm just trying to get some sense about all that's going to come back.
I think we're still getting back information from the department heads. I think kind of Megan took it over with me not being here at the last meeting, so she's probably in a better position to answer that question than I am right now.
Thank you. Ms. Megan?
I sent out an email. The only department that responded was the animal control, and I asked them to make sure Jessica was attached to all of it.
So that's what I see.
Okay, so it's probably, yeah, so it's probably not going to happen. Well, do you think we'd be ready to have another discussion on April 2nd? Is my assessment. And I think council agreed. We gave input and the department did a good job kind of giving us a rundown. But there's a lot of formatting issues that I have to go through. We've been optimistic and hoping that it could come back to council, then we'd go out to a public hearing and finally get it passed. And I was just happy to formate. There you go.
Are you all working on the formatting, Mick, or do we need to jump in to do formatting?
All we did last time was create the master ordinance with the exhibits being the actual fees. So every year we choose a separate, that's a little easier to do here. And so we haven't worked on the formatting for the actual exhibit. The last time we had that, it was still in Excel format.
Okay, so do you, how do you want to see it in the final draft?
Right now?
Not in the spreadsheet, I'm guessing.
Yeah, yeah. It's really hard to read and understand. So someone will allow to sit down who's a light person, doesn't know dilly about it, as if they were a resident, picked this thing up, and it's not, now let me go read this. I think once the format's in place and makes it clear, simple things like indentations and where subsets are, then the next will be, then we can get into, I like the details about the actual fee schedule itself.
And I've seen a couple of really good examples from some other cities, so I'll kind of look at those and then maybe I'll send them to you and take a look at, and then if that's what you need.
I'll do a bit.
So not on Excel?
We're going to be prepared for April 2nd with all the info. I don't think so personally. So they'd be rushing it.
For formatting, where are we? With 19?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
A weekend.
That's true.
I don't see it.
We're not, we're not having a discussion at the end of the month, right?
No.
So April 2nd, April 2nd is the next one.
If I may, just to, I guess, but it's already been said. But I had an interesting discussion, discussions with various residents of 42. And I got to the point of passing up the ordinance reschedule and that's being proposed. And in a lot of, I got a lot of some good feedback from some residents. I also sat down at the kitchen table and basically moved over this with a lot of folks. I called others on the phone, got some good feedback. Overall, what I understand according to my analysis is that people in the board are saying, great, having one ordinance to consolidate the master fee schedule is great. But there is the need to, there's a need for clarity. A lot of people don't understand what are some of the services that are being rendered for the fee they're paying. So there needs clarity there. And some are saying, well, maybe the fees are a little high. Can we renegotiate? Or what's the deal? How do we do that if we could? Interesting enough, some were asking, well, how were the fees tabulated to begin with? Were there comparisons to other cities? Was it just something that was developed here at, in Alpine, the benefit of Alpine? The idea is, where does the money go to? Once those fees are collected, what happens to them? So interesting questions came up that I think we should consider in the format of putting this ordinance together.
So I'm just kind of going off the last one that I saw. Some of that you probably wouldn't put in there. But I think maybe we could do something, Mick, that says the following fees will be collected for building services to be put into the general fund to offset the cost of providing services.
Yeah.
Because some of them will go to separate funds.
So we're utilizing funds and some?
Yeah, so we can do that.
We could do a little introductory as to each section.
So as far as the raise, just like anytime you do comps, you start with what you have. And then you look at, you know, the region and you kind of look a little bit broader than that. Other city sizes, but maybe on the other side of state, to look at kind of the comparison. So if you go back to that long spreadsheet they clearly provided, it has the different cities on there that we were looking at in the comparison.
The other thing that just came to mind, some folks were asking, well, you know, we know all of this is in process now. At some point, there will be an opportunity to provide feedback. But in case we have a question, who can we go to? I said, well, if I can help, of course, the board, I'm there. But if I can't, where do they go with the city now? Is it the public information officer to be? Or city manager? Or somebody had a question about the fee schedule?
Then I don't think it would be, I think it would need to adjust that. So, yeah, just to understand, public information officer in the ordinance refers to the request for public information. So I think if, I guess depending on the question, and I know maybe we talked about having the department heads all be there for the public meeting as well, to keep sure there's specific questions. So once we get that date, we'll make sure to have them there too, to answer questions at that point.
So would this be a workshop?
No, it would be a public hearing.
Yeah, we're going to have to ask ourselves how to go with that. So we can ask questions, public can ask questions, and the city employees can respond on the jury.
Workshop. How do they workshop throughout their format?
Well, workshop doesn't include the public questions.
So we got to figure out what that form of?
Yeah, a public hearing.
Yep. Well, but a public hearing, we can't respond.
We can have, it can be a workshop with a public hearing and have explanation at
the start with the workshop, council interaction, and then have a public hearing.
So you all would start, ask your questions, and then have public, a public hearing?
Public, just like any other radio. Get public input before the city act.
Okay, well, we'll just start. I think it's going to be a couple generations.
You know, when we met in the, in the center when this first started, there were department heads and other people there to answer questions. You can start off with that.
They were here last time, while we had discussion.
They were here last time as well, yes. That's the only way I know to do it. I mean, you can receive council input, department head input, and then have the public comment on it. And they could raise additional questions. They could be handled outside the meeting.
That's a workshop.
Yeah, workshop, that's exactly it.
Okay, let's go over to Kate, city manager.
In your packets, you have the request for funding from the family crisis center with Big Bend. In years past, they were included on your budget. After some input from Mick, realized that they weren't kind of meeting all the requirements, and then we kind of went into budget, didn't hear back from them for whatever reason. I hoped that we would have some definite fund balances and kind of year-to-date at this point to be able to move forward, but we didn't have them. So this is just kind of basically to introduce to you all what they're requesting. It'll probably be on an agenda in April to approve $8,625 to support their services that they provide through their agency. And they put in a timeframe, I believe, beginning April, to go for a year. I think that's the only thing that I would change is maybe go ahead and do April to the end of this fiscal year and then put them back into a cycle with a full fiscal year with the next coming budget. So this agreement that you have in there is what we were missing from them. And she's already signed it.
I agree.
Yeah, she's already signed it. Of course, they've got some work that they'll have to do, because they'll have to make some changes or possibly make some changes to their bylaws, as well as council will need to appoint a member to represent the city on the board. But that's.
We have an issue receiving the fund balance from the auditors.
Yes.
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 I think we've got, we had a draft in. It was presented yesterday to Jessica.
Okay, so we've run it.
Yes, I got it yesterday, but it's still a draft. It's not the final numbers.
It's not the final fund balance.
And as for the last fiscal year?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Right.
Right. So basically, from the estimate, I think when Megan and I were going over it, what did we come up with, Megan? Like 700,000?
It depends on which way you were going, because you were looking at different uses for the unrestricted.
But we were looking at altogether.
The whole entire fund balance is 1.3, but part of it is restricted. So unrestricted is roughly nine.
So about 900,000 is what council will be looking at. And then looking at where we're at with this year's budget, that's a decision council will have to make. Just pull it out of this year's budget, depending on where we're at with revenue versus income, or pull from the fund balance to cover that. I believe we're looking at, the auditors being here at the next council meeting. So this will probably be on April 2nd, once you basically get all those numbers.
Yeah, because I know it's a worthwhile cause. We need to look for funding for.
Yeah, so as you think about that, this will require a resolution. What I think I heard was it would be for whatever date we sign the agreement up here at the end of the fiscal year, the 30th to September 2nd.
Right. And then just incorporate them into the next year's budget. Because this, well, we may have to look at the term, oh, because this goes through 2020.
Right, but we, my view, we change the terms, get it lined up the way it's supposed to be, so it lines up with our fiscal year, you know, and they're not going to turn down money that meets their needs. So I would expect they would line up on whatever needs to be.
They might. Is Sarah here?
Sarah's here.
No, Sarah. I thought they could see me.
My bookkeeper told me, science.
So you'd be okay, Sarah, going through the starting?
We appreciate the consideration from all of you so much. We really would appreciate the funding to continue. It's so important to us.
Absolutely.
And just from a council perspective, my vote would probably be to nominate Lucy, the GR representative on the board, unless Lucy says she's not interested.
Don't mind, don't worry about it.
The winner.
She's the winner.
You're okay with it?
Yeah. So we need a resolution to approve this agreement in April, Mick, or just approve the agreement?
I think we can approve the agreement, the operation to be executed.
So the secretary, you got that Lucy will beat the legs off.
We can put out the resolution to, to be done all.
Yeah, just do it all in one. Okay. Anything else, Mike? Anything else, Mike? Let's move to item number eight. Action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from. If applicable, action items limited to up to 10 per meeting. Citizens are allowed to comment, limited to three minutes. After being called upon by the mayor, citizens are required to state their name and the ward and what they desire. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city. Limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak in his time available. Item number one. Councilman Stevens.
So Mr. Mayor, this is the election time of the year and for awards one, three, and five, since we have two positions that are unopposed, I'd like to propose that we approve certification of unopposed candidates for city council members, Ward Three and city council member, Ward Five, and approve an order of cancellation of election for unopposed council member, Ward Three, and council member, Ward Five. Council members would automatically be elected.
Can I second that?
Okay, motion been made. Second, any discussion? See, none, always in favor, right hand, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item two. Councilman Stevens.
Sir, so as we recall, last city council meeting, we had a presentation as we're going through the fees discussion about, well, fees are lack thereof for escorting vehicles through Alpine and therefore it diverts our police officers from other work. It does two things. It diverts them from other work, and the other is it makes, in my view, an important business that's down south, have to wait and expend their time and resources. So the purpose of this ordinance is to do the first reading that will allow us to charge a fee of $35 for the traders going through. We had that discussion last time. So with that as background, I'd like to move that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-03-01 of the City of Alpine, Texas, pending chapter 94, traffic and vehicles in the code of order of the City of Alpine, Texas, to require our fee for requested police escort services, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing several penalty clause, providing for a savings clause, providing a penalty clause, providing for publication of official newspaper, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
We are seconded. Any discussion? Okay, and I'm just happy to see the two traders being escorted.
Oh, yeah.
And I talked to Chris about maybe doing some modifications on that term.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so any more discussion? See, none, always in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number three.
Sir, so Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up to the second reading and the final reading of the zoning change that we talked about earlier that we had a public hearing on. So I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the second final reading of the zoning change application for R1C2 for the intended use to expand the not-for-profit federally qualified health center, the legal description being all of Block 10, North Heights addition of City of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, and appears to apply that Block Number 62, filed in the office of the county court of Brewster County, Texas. Save it except for and following that portion of blocks 1, 2, and 3 conveyed to the state of Texas for highway purposes, and the West 95.32 feet, Block 10, being 0.61 acres more or less conveyed by Charles C., Light C., ETUX1 to be Light C. to try a development partnership by deeds reported in Brewster County, Texas.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second. Any discussions? None? Okay, always in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Let's move on to item number four.
See, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, the last city council meeting, we had a discussion and you have the information in your packet about renaming the Ballfield Centennial for Mr. Val Luhon, we all thought was a good idea. So following up that, I drafted a resolution to make that happen. It is in your package. So I propose that we approve the resolution recommendation for the Alpine Parks and Recreation Ward to rename the Ballfield Centennial for Mr. Val Luhon. Ms. Luhon and Joe Torres have volunteered to withdraw all costs associated with the signage related to renaming, and I thought Magoo would, now Magoo's here, so, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Stevens, there's no resolution in the packet.
Then, okay, I should bring up on that one. I may still make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
Any discussion? And I think that you're the one that started the whole, we don't have anything to say. Came from the Parks.
Parks.
Okay, well, good deal.
Yep.
Okay, so see, no more, any discussion? Always in favor?
Do we need to have a resolution to change the?
We need to though.
Meg?
I prefer to have something permanent.
Yeah.
You go ahead and make the council's wishes known. We'll be on the synergy.
That'd be great.
I know that councilor, you also had facts that were given out for the course.
That's a different topic.
You may refer this one.
Well, we've already got a number of public servants.
Joe should go over and make it out.
Yeah. Okay, so, thank you, Joe. Okay, so always in favor of resolution? Okay, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
And, Rick, you want to write it or what you write?
I can write it, Rick, but you know.
I got it. I'll write it. I'll bring it next to him.
I don't mind doing the word, Rick.
That's okay, I got it.
So you want to.
Okay, let's go to item five.
So the next one, consistent with Megan's discussion earlier about what the airport board has been doing, they've really been doing the old work to make sure we're compliant with all the rules and regulations that sort of allows us to receive the funding that we do from the federal government and from state, go do the work. When you get 90, 10, you need 90% of credit cost, you like to go with that. Part of our requirement is we have to comply with the federal regulations. On that basis, propose that the city adopt ordinance 2019-03-02, amending ordinance 2016-11-01, rules and regulations for the Alpine Disparers Movement, Section 1, use of tariff or restricted, add certain important requirements for any person using the airport for business or commercial purposes, providing that the ordinance shall be cumulative, providing a safety clause, providing for a savings clause, providing a penalty clause, providing for publication in the official newspaper, and providing an effective date.
Sir, a second. Okay, motion made, second. Any discussion?
Only question, Meg, just from a clarification standpoint, the effective date enlisted in the ordinance would be on approval. We still have to publish it in the.
Publication of the caption.
Okay, and so how long after the publication occurs?
It's just that day.
That day of publication.
Date of publication, unless you set a different date.
Okay, well, that's what we have in the ordinance, so I'll fault it to make sure the airport board is doing all the things to make sure that all these operating businesses get the word out first.
Well, that's the way it works. If you publication.
Yep.
Just want to set a different date if you wish.
No.
Any more discussion? Always in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Like sign. It carries. Thank you. Okay, number six.
Number six, we've been down this path a number of times. This is second final reading of the ordinance to find the public information trust. So I make the motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2019-02-01, Article 6, public information requested, Chapter Administration of the ordinance, is provided that the public information officer, the city is a back, the six second.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made, second. Any questions? I've got one. Before these publications go out, I think they should go through our legal counsel to make sure that everything is in order.
I agree.
That's the process.
No problem.
No problem.
Then you have those deadlines.
Right.
This is just your deadline.
You got a deadline, okay.
And by the way, just so you know, Cynthia, Jessica, I think Andrea is due back from attorney duty pretty soon, so I'll have to back there. That's okay, attorney in the law, that's the thing. Elfson, that kind of thing.
Now, that's my input to that. Okay, any more discussion or any discussion? None? Always in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Number seven.
Number seven, following up on the discussion we had at the last city council meeting regarding the photos by Barney Nelson that were in the shoot, lots of explanation, what is the shoot, where do you exist, so trying to get people up to speak with the history, but that is background, and we agree that makes sense. I'd like to propose that we adopt resolution 2019-03-02 that will allow the city-owned photos by Barney Nelson that were in the shoot but no longer displayed, be loaned to Big Ben Salary Display. That includes a display documentation, the photos are on loan from the City of Alpine, and there is a resolution for that because I wrote it, and it's in the package. And the bottom line about the resolution is, they display, they've got a document that they're on loan from the City of Alpine, and there are two conditions for return. One is Big Ben Salary no longer loaned, displaying the photos, or the city in a moderate or plus words or pros back.
Glad you concluded that, I saw that, because I thought it was like that.
Yep, we want to get that.
Okay. Sir, okay, Maria, seconded. Any discussion? Always in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And the shoot was right next door.
Yeah.
For those who didn't know.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to number eight.
Mayor, this is a note considering take action to adopt resolution 2019-03-01 requesting the Texas Legislature repeal the Texas Tax Code, Section 351.1035, stipulating how the City of Alpine may expend its municipal hotel occupancy tax revenue. After Mr. Stevens' comment, he is correct, that probably should not be in there in that third whereas. It should just be determinative for the group, economic development, and tourism economy. That's probably where that should end. So going back to the discussion item on the conference, several months ago, I reported to council that I had been participating in discussions with cell loss in Brewster County, looking at the potential of a hotel conference center for not set doors. There is an interested investor. Since then, there has also come to our attention that there is another hotel here that is interested in building a conference center. So the city had a plan done in 2010 that looked at conference center layout in actual, I wouldn't call it a feasibility study, it was basically, here's potentially what this is gonna cost you if you decide to build it. It didn't have any financing alternatives or suggestions in it. So my initial thought is if this legislature goes through, which at this point it appears it's not gonna have any opposition to it at the state level, that that would allow us to utilize some of those funds to actually put a feasibility study together that would look at different financing options, either through public-private, private-private, I mean, let's try that again, public-private, public-public, or other types of financing options that are available. There are some restrictions when we get into those kind of projects, and it makes it very complicated. And other cities have been successful in doing them, cities the same size as Alpine. And because we've got two investors that currently are interested in putting a project like this together, only makes sense that we actually get a full feasibility plan that has public input and engagement, just like our parks plan does, to determine whether this is a direction in the future that the city needs to go or the public wants the city to go. So the conference center as it in itself is really just kind of an option that the city can look at in the future. If it is built, whether it is a public enterprise or a private public enterprise, would allow the city to market and to bring in conferences to fill in hotel rooms on the slower days of the week, which would be kind of your Monday through Wednesday or Monday through Thursday timeframes. Looking at some of the market data with our location and the trends in tourism, this is the kind of location people are looking at. The success of Lost Pines out of Bastrop, you've got the 10, actually, it's a $120 million project in Fredericksburg that's going in. So a lot of these smaller cities, this is where people want to come for these types of conferences and workshops and trainings. And I think that Alpine, with its location, is ideal to really look at the potential for this for Alpine. And looking on the list of the 10 best resort and conference centers in Texas, your closest competition is actually La Jolla's. They rank number two. So this is an area that people are already looking at coming to for this type of location and experience for their events. The particular resolution that is before you really just repeals that portion of the tax code that requires the City of Alpine to utilize 50% of its hotel occupancy tax fund on advertising. This particular year, we had to set aside $325,000 for advertising. Not that advertising would go away completely, you would still have some requirements to do that, and of course, we're not gonna be successful tourism-wise if we're not advertising. So the idea is really that in those years where the requests do not meet 50,000, that we could set that money aside to utilize it for other activities and maybe expand in other areas involving tourism to increase the hotel occupancy tax further.
So savings plan going forward.
We can set it aside if we, if the, if after the master plan and feasibility studies are done, it's determined that this is something that the city would want to do, whether as a public-private or a public-public enterprise, the city would then have a revenue source that it could set aside to repay and get on. And just so that, you know, everyone knows, conference centers themselves do not make money. Conference centers provide you a vehicle to bring in tourism, to make additional revenue. And the studies that I looked at, the one in particular from the state convention visitor bureau, is that tourists who come for training and conferences will spend two to two and a half times more money in your city than their regular passive tourist does. So this helps out our hoteliers in filling out occupancies on the slow days as well as bringing in extra outside revenue.
I was trying to figure out why, is it because they don't have to pay for their hotel room? Problems. So they're spending like crazy?
Yeah, they shop. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I move that we adopt resolution 2019-03-01, requesting the Texas Legislature repeal Texas Tax Code, Section 351.1035, stipulating how the City of Alpine may experience municipal hotel occupancy tax revenue, with the exception that we delete in its entirety line item 10 on the resolution, which is after the word "and" the tourism economy, make that a semicolon "and."
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, motion's made, second. Any discussion?
So I'm fully supportive of this because it gives us the flexibility to do things I think we need to do from a hotel occupancy tax point. When I pencil out kind of the numbers and we'll get into this if there's ever a plan that goes forward, I struggle with this thing ever making money and even breaking even. That's my fundamental concern. If you look at, if the city were to make an investment of $5 million, to go and put that on a 30-year, if you're talking 6%, that's $30,000 a month, $30,000 a year. There is not one event that occurs here in Alpine today that comes even closer to that. We'd have that 12 of them. So that's a concern, so it'd be good to pencil the numbers out and see where it goes. I'm surprised the hotelier would think they can make money out of it as well. But hey, if we can come up with those numbers, it'd be great, but I'm not.
That is one hotel. Two different hotels.
I think that's a lot of great. I spend a lot of time in the back trying to understand business cases, whether it's to our friends to the west, or to our friends to the south, or to our friends to the southeast. And while they all, they all have more money. And while they all, they all have more money behind them than they're bringing in to make their concern ongoing, that's, I'll leave it at that.
And well, and that's why I said that these, these do not make money. Our, our thing is just to make sure whatever we get into is, is resulting in greater revenue, at least to offset that debt, but building itself will not make you money.
Yeah, body, thank you.
And you said that there was one in Fredericksburg?
They're actually getting ready to build one in Fredericksburg. I haven't checked lately, but I believe it had already been presented. So, so there's a number of economic initiatives, there's hotel tax rebates that can be given if it is a certain size. There's also other kinds of incentives, workforce incentives that can be given on something like this. And they all have their own compensation process. So just one that I'm kind of familiar with, don't know too many of the details. The, the City of El Paso built a small park using hotel funds. Sales tax revenue is projected to not be paid out for another 15 years. They're looking at actually paying it off by 2024, which is almost 15 years ahead of what they had anticipated. Flip side of that, Great Wolf Lodge wants to build their thing on the mountain and of course the public is opposed to it because it ruins their view of the mountain. But it doesn't look like it's going to meet all of the requirements to get sales tax rebates. So it's not just looking at, you know, do we want it and can we use it? Will it benefit us? But what will it be eligible for to reduce our actual costs and encourage investment into it? Because more investment into it can ease less dollars out of our pocket. So if it's, we're probably a good five, six years from even being ready to make any kind of decision.
Looking at it.
But the first step is repealing this part so that at least you've got some additional revenue to look at, is this even something we can do?
Okay. Opposed in favor, raise your hands. Opposed by side motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay. Item number nine, say it again.
This is actually the ordinance that Rick presented in discussion back a couple months ago, requiring that contractors be registered in order for us to put them through a process to ensure that they are bonded, insured, and on the oven up and addressing the needs of our community. Sets a timeframe, sets price, will have to be added into our master plan schedule.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve an ordinance requiring contractors to register with the City of Alpine prior to doing business with the unique city apartments.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. I think this is probably obvious. It's just so that the contractors that come to Alpine, sometimes they come and they're just here for a minute and they kind of start a project and they get paid and then they leave. Is that, that's just so that that doesn't happen? Is that what this is? Right?
That and a bunch of other.
Okay.
There are some who live here, would like to leave. No, we, registered, understand the requirements. So I have one question and I, I think it's important for clarification and that's just part of the first reading and make you probably want to take a look at it. Section 18-270, registration required, subparagraph A says no person, firm or corporation. I get that. But homeowners do work as well. This is not intended to impact homeowners who are doing work on their own, but those who are contractors. So I think we just need a statement in here.
Throw that in there. We just have another sentence.
Yeah, this does not apply to homeowners.
Yeah, we'll put it in the right, we'll put it in the right part of your work.
Make, would, would all of these require some sort of state issued licenses?
No.
Not necessarily.
Well, because general GCs don't have them.
And, and some of the work might not require permits.
Right.
So I think, you know, homeowners don't generally have to get a permit for their own work. So maybe put, put a section in there, make it clear this ordinance doesn't apply to work done by the homeowners themselves. Yeah, we can put that in.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I just, yeah.
Sure.
The good thing is it says contractor registration.
Right.
It's the unintended consequences when those who are not putting in place find out something wrong on someone's, no, no, this does apply when it says person. So we just want to make sure we did that.
Yep.
But with that amendment, I think, and that's the one change I would make, since this is the first reading, we have the ability to go through that if you make that.
Yeah, and I think the whole bottom line on it takes the consumer.
Most definitely. There's no question about that.
And so I think this is a great ordinance that should be implemented years ago.
How, how many backhoe testers do we have in town?
I think there's three.
Four? And they're all plumbers, right? And they have to pay a separate fee to register as a backhoe?
No, they would just register as plumbers.
Oh, I just saw it here.
Is it listed separately?
It is. I think you can do backhoe.
Without being a plumber? We'll have to check.
I believe, we'll double check that.
Yes.
Any more discussion on it? Opposed in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed by side. And ten, Maria Curry.
This is to discuss considering take action to accept the proposal from KSA Engineering to conduct a street evaluation and improvement funding study. So it goes back to what we talked about a couple weeks ago.
Is there a second? You two?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, any discussion?
Yes. So back to my question from the information and discussion, I'm very concerned we are in a position, no matter what happens out of this, not capable of meeting the needs for the city and our local consumers.
They are. I know that Eddie had put together a PO for some material. He ran into some issues because he was going to need to do three quotes and potentially an RFD. And he basically came to me and he said, realistically, my guys aren't ready to do any road work. He said, we might be able to do a little of this and a little bit of that, but they're just too new to operate the equipment. I said, well, what are our options? What do you think? And he kind of said, well, it's really going to be up to council whether they want to allow to have some seasonal workers come in. Mainly he's referring to bringing Hector back out of retirement, if Hector's willing, to assist in operating some of the equipment to help them get that project started. In talking to the water department, they, they are not really in a position, so that underground work would have to be contracted out as well. And again, when you're dealing with your public utilities and your roads, the absence of an engineer to provide design and specs is an issue. So we don't have that in place either. I want to, I want to make a clarification. While we budgeted $1 million to the street department, we did not budget $1 million for streets and were actually to redo streets. So with material for repairs and maintenance, as well as salaries, equipment costs, leases, totals a million. I think last year it was 400,000 and this year it was 300,000. We are going to have a fund balance and so once that is presented to council, then you could actually possibly have $1 million to put into the streets specifically as a street And then, but that'll be a decision because there's different things that you can do with your fund balance. You could roll some of that into your reserve to meet your GASP 54 requirements, which is 17% of your expenses. And then build up your reserve, understanding that any of your fund balance that you do reallocate for expenditures brings down your net position for the total fiscal year. So there are some implications in, in doing that, but moving some of it into reserve and then reallocating the rest of it to create a bigger project will also make it much more attractive to other bidders to bid. And of course, you're going to always go with a little bidder, which will probably be somebody local, but it will make it more attractive to get other bids in an interest from that perspective. As for this particular item, this was going to be the first step in having KSA come in and do a basic street assessment, defining and prioritizing which streets need to be done, as far as what's good for steel codes, what's good for basic overlay and what would need to be reconstructed. And that also helps us determine kind of what amount of money we're going to need to do streets and then put together that plan. The element in here as far as the complete street ordinance, it did provide some additional information on what a complete street is and looking at it from saying, well, is this a street that needs additional amenities? We've had discussions with TechStop and amongst council as far as needing sidewalks, needing crosswalks, needing some changing and lighting and signage. And that's what a complete street ordinance does. It kind of looks at all of those. Is this needed? Is it not needed? And what is that additional cost? One thing that I do believe that the city needs is to have header curves put in whenever they do reconstruction, because header curves are basically made out of concrete, they go underground, they keep stormwater from getting underneath your asphalt. And again, getting the utilities involved ahead of time to do line replacement before you do a reconstruction so that all of those issues are taken care of before you, you spend the money on the asphalt and maybe additional amenities, whether it's ADA crossings, some sidewalks, additional lighting, bike lane, maybe not a bike lane. Overall, if you look at the information, the impact to the total cost of the project is minimal when you're looking at complete streets. And of course, a complete street doesn't always look the same. It looks at what is the use, what is the need, and then determines what that's going to look like. From the pictures in here, there are still pictures in here of streets that don't have any sidewalks and have people walking down, which that may be it. There's just not enough traffic to justify additional expenditures. But again, if you, if council wants to go with just a street study, there's the quote in here for just a street study and then there's the one that includes a complete street ordinance, which is basically a commitment from councils telling the public, we're going to look at all of the needs of the community, not just the dry heat community.
And also protects the integrity of the street in the future from being compromised by digging the new paved street.
So did we get any other bids from last time? Or was this the only one?
No, we, we had one other one, but they weren't able, they weren't going to be able to get to it until May or June. At the time that the proposal was sent out, KSA was the only one that was able to get started and I did talk with them last week and they're just as willing to start next week if this is approved as they were a month ago. They, they would be coming in from San Antonio. The only other firm that submitted a bid within this range, again, would not be able to get to it until May or June.
Any more discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. And very properly, in our budget for this year, we discussed the idea of having some outside source to come in and do an assessment, study providing information to it, but we have budgeted an amount of money, right?
I believe we budgeted 20,000.
20,000.
And so had this, had the proposal come in under 20,000, then we would have just contracted them. But because it came in over 20,000, it's back for council consideration so that, because it's additional funds that we're allocating.
And then we discussed that, that the additional funds would be coming out of another account which could be from?
Well, it would come from the street account, the street department. Within, within the same department.
My only thought on this is it, it makes a lot of sense to have a thorough analysis and evaluation to give us guidance as to what the actual needs are for, for paving, improving, taking care of our streets or bringing them up to standard, as I heard somebody say from our audience the last time, which is great, no problem. And then we put our million dollars to work to get the work done according to specifications. But what happens? You get a good rain and we're back to base one. That's, that's my issue. We, a couple of years ago, when we had road re-bathing and road resurfacing and so forth, and we invested quite a bit of money. And then we had a terrible rainy season and we're back to those same files.
Well, and for me, I think the header curves are extremely important in, in maintaining the integrity of the asphalt that you're dealing with.
And we can have a certified engineer as, as, as I say calls for, to let these streets to proper.
To design them.
And with this, if we did this, would this open us up to being able to get more grants available to us?
It is the first step. So part, when you're applying for the grants, they want to see, you know, have you had public meetings? What was the public input? Did this, did the public prioritize it? So for example, we're looking at TechStop funds. We could go to them and say, we have a complete street ordinance and we've had public input on this upcoming project and they've requested for sidewalks and we need ADA. So they do have a fund. It's the TAPS fund and I cannot remember what TAPS stands for, but it does trails, pedestrian paths, lighting and ADA compliance as part of the project. We would still pay for the paving, but all those extras would come from that. I think at one of our previous meetings, Jerry mentioned about CDVGs also being used for streets. So there another one that looks for, when you do your application, they ask, you know, how, how was, how did you determine this project was a priority? And you say, well, we did this, we had public meetings, we had public engagement, this was identified as a priority when we did this study. And then we can put into them to pay for the sidewalks or the lighting because at the amount they give you, you're not going to pave a whole lot of street. But they can pay for the extras that go on to them. So there, there are a lot of other sources and when you have this, this basically says we did have this study done, these were, this was determined to be a priority at this level to be reconstructed, overlaid or still coded. And so we're submitting our request for funds. The other thing too that we, that this ties into is it helps us when we get into the line replacement for the utilities in presenting that along with an application to Water Development Board because a portion of their funds, again, they're usually 70, 30, but if you put in the lighting replacement and street, then it kind of reduces your overall cost. You're sharing it now with your utilities instead of just kind of your general fund for street, you're paying that money for construction. So there's a lot of different ways that it can be used, but it gives you a starting point in where you need to go when asking for money and how much you need to ask for.
Any more discussion?
So changing out manhole covers?
Right, you said that we need to have a million budgeted, it was only 300,000?
There is a million to the department that includes salaries, benefits, supplies, uniforms and other equipment under the actual street improvement line item. It was not a.
But, but my point is we only pay a street for paying our shoes. I'm pretty frustrated. Here we are at the end of paving season, we have no material, we have no plan, and we're about to delay because the earliest this happens, let's say we improve this, they come in and here we are in March, the earliest we get feedback based upon the proposal is the middle of May. And then we're going to fiddle around with what are the priorities? We have streets crumbling, we've not taken care of them. In my view, it's unconscionable for us to be in this situation. We are fully six months behind and we have no plan. I mean, that's just my observation. And I think shame on us for being in that situation. This is, is that poor on our part as a city.
I, I think you're correct. I mean, you've got a comprehensive master plan that hasn't been updated since 1999 and you've got a street plan that hasn't been. ninety-nine, and you've got a street plan that hasn't been updated since twenty-ten.
I, I agree with Jessica. We've been paving roads and we've not touched a road since you've been here.
Well, some of the roads have been repaved, have crumbled. You know, take for instance right here, thirteen between Avenue E and Soul Ross.
Roads that haven't been touched in my board that are crumbling and they're getting worse, and we're not even sending people out to go fix them. Okay, so we have no material, we have no building, we have no...
But to me, you've got to have a plan to order your material. Given, if you, you know, you've got a plan, order the material, you hold it in advance.
Well, we could have done that six months ago because right now we have no material.
How much material were we going to need?
Hey, I, I'm not running the city day to day.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. We don't know how much material.
We have zero. Doesn't matter what we need.
Right. Why do we order, under order or over order? And what?
Mayor, before you came on board, this city was paving roads regularly. We poured material, worked our way through. Okay, I, I, I've said my...
I disagree with you there. Okay, oh, any more discussion? Oh, it's in favor of the motion.
Uh, hold for me. So, your approach is, let's go with the plan, assessment. Find out what the needs are, and the second phase is to put it into effect. And from my here from Cosmo Stevens is, if we could do some work now at the monies we have, we put it into getting the resources to do some more, to do some minor repaving But what about long-term? I mean, what we're doing is we're paving every couple of years and going back to having to repay another, another couple of years. We're, it's like been dating the situation. We need to look, as a council, I think we need to look long-term. But is this the right approach? I'm not sure. That's my, my question. And do we really think that paying forty-nine thousand dollars or an approach that may work or may not work, and you end up in the same situation? I am not too optimistic. We should be focusing, I guess, on what do we really need to do for the benefit of resident in the city.
So, I agree with that one. My concern is, we've talked about utilities and when do we need to work wastewater lines? When do we need to work water lines? And I'll tie that into getting them done before we start paving roads. We council have seen none of that plan. And so, what we're proposing right now is, the proposal on the table is, go do a study on the roads. We have no plan right now about how to go do the infrastructure underneath the ground. And so, that's will be another item, and I'm concerned we're going to say, well, we now have to do the underground infrastructure plan, of which this council set aside money in reserve to go do that. We don't have that plan in place. My worry is, we're, we're at least a year away from even thinking about what our implementation's going to be. And so, we're stuck, you know? And that's what I thought we're supposed to be doing, laying out that plan. We, in my mind, we city council should be looking at this broader plan, not just the roads plan. And we don't have it. And I got constituents regularly calling me, Rick, what's going on on the roads? I got this, this, this. Hey, I could make a phone call to say I got to get potholes fixed, the wall of roads fixed. Nothing's going on. That's the frustration. And so, I'm not confident that this plan alone is sufficient.
This, this plan is just the start. So, the needs assessment on the infrastructure, council did award that contract in February, believe. The engineering firm is coming next Monday to review the needs assessment, to make sure that they are fulfilling the full scope and also coordinating with everything else that is going on because we've got another thing that's happening. So, we put that R F Q for the needs assessment out, and we've gotten no responses the first time. The second time we got one response, and we put it a third time and finally got three responses. So, was the intent to, to have it done sooner there? Yes, absolutely. I, I can't control who submits and who doesn't, but I know that it's not ever, it is not ever a best practice to just accept a single bid the first time around. So, that's where that goes. So, and I understand the frustration. I get those phone calls also. Eddie and his crew are doing the best job that they can. We've talked about having him do some additional millings on these really bad roads. If you drive by Ms. Curry's house...
Hasn't been touched in twenty years I've lived there.
She has a lovely assortment of potholes in front, and some of these areas are just too big to pothole. And so, that's kind of where Eddie said, well, if we can get a contrast, if we can bring somebody back in out of retirement to operate this one piece of equipment, we can take care of some of these smaller areas with, again, with, with a Band-Aid to hold them over until we actually get into some street reconstruction, as well as some stormwater controls to protect the road.
But we had that discussion several months ago, Jessica.
You're right.
That I thought we're going to go zip some roads. We have this material we're going to bring in to even have the material to go do that.
My understanding is Eddie, and I'd have to follow up with him, Eddie did put, put in an order for some base material. When they were wrapping up Country Club Estates, he put in an order for some additional base material to come in. It has not arrived, and my understanding from him as far as the rest of it, that it, he can, as far as like the emulsifier and other stuff that probably could be here within thirty days, and so he's not well concerned too much on that part of it. There are roads that they milled up probably two years ago down in Ward Five and out here Ward Two, and they've been sitting waiting to be asphalted, but now they're going to have to be, be re-lated because, I mean, they're pretty level, but most of that base material now has just sunk in down, and so they'll have to come back and redo it. And, and Hector did leave us a list of kind of, this is where he was thinking would go next. Eddie has looked at it, and they're kind of scattered all over. It's not something you would want to contract out because mobilizing equipment in different places doesn't work. Excuse me. The gas department has indicated they're ready to go, whatever's decided. The water in the sewers, where it gets complicated, because you've, you've got to have some kind of design and plans done in order for that to happen. But, but this is the start. I mean, once we say, okay, this is the plan, these are priorities, we know what the cost is going to be by these sections, tie that in with the line replacement plan for the water, and that gets you kind of your next step. If, if there's no line replacement, that's kind of where you come back and say, look, there's no line replacement needs to be done here. This is, this is a road that we're ready to start doing.
I, getting back to the, the concept of planning, I know that our overall basic city plan is outdated. We need to do something about that. And the way I see this particular plan, like assessment, is sort of a, part of a strategic to support the master plan. The, but in the meantime, we have roads that need repair. And then the question of the money, where's it going to come from to start initiating for the grand plan and then having to go this route? And then once we get the assessment, then we start working. So, it's an interesting paradox, but what?
I, I cannot say as a city manager that going out and paving roads right now, just pave roads, is an efficient use of taxpayer money without making sure that the base underneath and the integrity underneath will uphold at least for five years. I, I can't say that with certainty. I, I, again, coming into Alpine, going back a year and a half ago, sitting right there questions about, you know, and I said, I like plans. I like to know that the public has been involved, they've been engaged, and they, they have participated in the process to determine what the priorities are in the city. Paved roads is an obvious thing, but again, how do you determine which roads to do first? Do you do level three roads first, or do you do level road, level one roads first? Do you do them by sections? Do you do them by traffic counts? And that's kind of where this thing gets us started, is being able to start making that decision. Is it a long time? Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I can tell you, it took me four years of planning to put a water system in. It, it does take a long time. It's something that does require patience. But the question is, am I going to spend a nickel today and have it still be worth a nickel a year from now, or do I wait until I know that this is, this is where it needs to go? As a, as a steward of public money, I can't say with confidence that just going out and paving is the best way to use your tax money.
Well, as elected official, we've got roads that are crumbling, and we have citizens who are complaining, and they're questioning our ability to be city council members, very simply. It's been a year and a half and we have no plan.
Hold for the question. Oh, it's in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oh, is opposed, like sign. Stain?
Two.
Okay.
So, I don't know where to go from here. I obviously don't...
Let's move on to item number nine.
Thanks for sticking around here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all. It's long gone out of me, but we appreciate you participating here. Thank you all very much.
Pursuant to Texas Government Code fifty-five-one dot zero seventy-one, consultation with attorney on matters which is due, duty of the city, attorney of the Texas system, there was professional conduct conflict with this chapter, requires discussion of items in closed session, and fifty-five-one dot zero seventy-one, consultation with the attorney regarding potentially conflated claims against the city. I propose we move into executive session and that we cover item B first and then go to item A.
I'll second that.
Okay. What time is it? Oh.
I have eight twenty-three.
Okay. Holds in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. We'll take a five-minute basis.
Do you just push it again?